We'll call a meeting in order for the Ashland Board of City Commission. If you will please rise, we'll ask Commissioner Goot to do our invocation and all leaders in our pledge.
Let us pray. Well, we thank you for our city and how you have continually blessed us from our humble beginnings to our present day. We are thankful that we can meet freely and exchange ideas and enact ordinances for the best interests of our city and its citizens. It is for this reason we ask and invite your Holy Spirit into our chambers to guide and direct this Board of Mayor Commissioners. In this season of Thanksgiving, we are most thankful for our staff and employees who work tirelessly to make our city a wonderful place to live, to work, and to enjoy. Bless those here today and bless our meeting, we pray always, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Goot. Motion to receive and file the agenda.
No move.
Second.
Any additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to receive and file the amendments for October 9th, 2025.
No move. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion to receive and file the amendments for October the 23rd, regular meeting, 2025.
No move. Second.
Any additions, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. We'll move into our hearings and reports. We'll start with Mr. Martin.
Thanks for being here. As always, it's great to see that we've got another penning today. It's exciting for the families and the department and the enthusiasm that's involved in promotions and accepting new responsibilities for your department and your city. And we congratulate you and we thank you for your efforts. This is a busy season. We want to especially thank some of the folks that have been involved in the Winter Wonderland and the lighting downtown. It's good to see what's been done to correct some of the problems we had on Winchester Avenue and we still have issues to resolve. But Marion Russell and his committee, Sean Murray, Public Works, Street Department, Parks, Fire Department, Police Department. We've got a parade next Tuesday that always is a big deal in town. Lights got turned on on Tuesday. Rob Johnson was there and Rob McNerlin, the marshal for the parade. We've got a lot of stuff on the agenda today. I want to give a kudo to our city manager and finance. These agendas, I don't know how many of y'all pick them up, but if you look at the notes and the summaries that are provided in terms of what is being done with each individual item, you don't have to go any further. I mean, all of the information is there. It's on our website for those that aren't here at the meeting, and it is very informative, Mr. Grub, and we appreciate what's done in that regard. We were, I'll leave the issue about tomorrow's groundbreaking to the mayor.
Okay.
That might be up an issue, but we're certainly glad to see you out today and we'll have a fairly long meeting, I think.
True.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Goot.
Just want to welcome everybody today. We have a lengthy agenda, but I'm glad you're here. I just want to echo those sentiments about Winter Wonderland. There was a great kickoff last Monday in anticipation for our parade, which is Tuesday night, the 25th. And I want to thank the Winter Wonderland of Lights Committee and our wonderful Streets Department and Parks Department and the decorations all over town. They really look nice. We do, I did learn of one problem, though. On Monday night, we have a scourge of squirrels, and they're eating through the wire in Central Park on some of the lights. And so, I don't know how we're going to solve that problem, but Parks was real concerned about the squirrels getting into those lights. But I want to thank you for being here, and I'm thankful for our police and our fire department. My wife was involved in a wreck yesterday, right down in front of Kentucky Farmers, and they were there in just a few seconds, and I'm glad for, I'm, thank you and thankful for y'all being there. I think she was thinking about tracing her monos when she went through that light. Anyway, I thank you for your quick-
Don't make any more public admissions of light.
Yeah. I only dig a deeper hole. But anyway, I'm glad you're here. Happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Okay. I'll go next, because Commissioner Martin mentioned tomorrow. We're going to postpone or reschedule tomorrow's groundbreaking. Supposed to rain all day long, that's for our wastewater treatment plant, and that's the largest project that the city has ever done. I mean, it's well over $100 million. So, please look out, look on social media, and our people here will come up with another date, and we'll try to get everyone there that needs to be there. But we're excited about that project, and we'll let you know when we reschedule that. Our Parks Department, and you know, the other commissioners have alluded to that, of how busy they have been, especially in October. We had a regional cross-country meet that now they're doing that in our park, which our Parks employees really do a lot of work with that. And they had to art trick-or-treat, and they did a fantastic job. It was supposed to rain that day, and they decided to move it to the crab and worked really, really well. So, I'm really proud of what they do. You know, we decided to do a lot more downtown for decorations this year, and our Streets Department, our Parks Department, you know, put up the trees. We went and bought more trees for Broadway, and I don't know if you've seen Broadway Square at the nighttime, but I think it's the best it's ever looked. It's gorgeous down there. And we've done a couple of other things. I've asked Perry Madden, who, he's got music going down on the Camaro Arcade awning, so we've got music playing all during the day, Christmas music. So, there's all kinds of things we're trying to do to enhance our city and keep it going. With Winter Wonderland and the parade that's coming up, it should be an exciting time. But with that said, I'll pass it on to Commissioner Rammer.
Well, thanks, everybody, for being here today. It's going to be a great meeting. I would have never thought that when I would be elected that we'd have a meeting that is night, or an agenda that's 19 pages long, but here we are. So, it's going to be a big meeting, so I'm going to keep my comments short. I want to acknowledge, we've got folks here from the Paramount, we've got folks here from the Chamber of Commerce, thanks for being here, and Five Co., as well as family members in our Fire Department to celebrate the penning for one of our own. The thunder was taken by two commissioners and mayor, so I appreciate mentioning those events, the Winter Wonderland of Lights and the trick-or-treat. But I just want to say, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Remember, it's the time of year that, to serve others in the community, give back where you can, and enjoy it with your friends and family. So, that's all I've got.
Commissioner Rampero?
Well, when you go last, there's not a lot you can say that hadn't been said. I echo exactly what Commissioner Martin said about Winchester Avenue, though. Once we got the electrical problems and electric figured out, it does look a little bit different than the previous year. The only thing I'll get to say about the wastewater treatment plant, we're a city of 20,000 people. We've got a $100 million project going. To me, that's remarkable right off the bat. And when we entered into the agreement, we weren't promised any money from the state or the feds. Only thing we were promised is what would happen to us if we didn't do it. So, I'm going to give a shout-out to anybody, especially our Finance Department, that went out and secured some funding to help us along with this project. They did a remarkable job.
Great. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two departmental reports. The first one is Director Pullum. He's going to give a brief presentation.
Mr. Pullum's the Director of CED, Code and ED.
Thank you, City Manager, and I promise to keep this brief. I'd like to spend some time talking about our assisted housing program. This is Tracy Wilks, who runs our program. Right now, we have a goal set for our program to reach 500 vouchers for 500 families within the city of Ashland by the end of Q1 of 2026. 500 sounds like a lot. It's typically where we run, right about 500, but due to some staffing issues, we've dropped down a little bit over the last few months, so we're trying to work back to that level. So, if we want to look at some action steps, on the next slide, in the beginning of November, we had a tenant briefing where we brought in several families. We ended up issuing 44 Housing Choice vouchers on November 4th. What that means is, those families have been pulled off the waiting list, they're given vouchers, then they go out, and they'll take those vouchers and try to negotiate with landlords to find a place to live. Those landlords then will, with the tenant, sign a tenancy agreement that we'll review, we'll look at certain aspects of that agreement to make sure that it's affordable for the tenant before we then kick it on to the inspection phase. And with the inspection phase, we send an inspector out to inspect the property to make sure that it meets all of HUD standards. If it doesn't, we give them a punch list, the landlord, then they usually complete that punch list and call us back. We re-inspect them, we're able to get that family on the program. So, if you look, this week, we've completed eight inspections this week, so that moves our number up eight more. We've got four more families that are awaiting re-inspections from our Code Enforcement Office, and we hope to have those completed early next week. That'll get us to 487 before the end of November. That's our goal. And then, if we want to move on to the next page, that's our next steps. In order to issue more vouchers, we need to have another briefing, where what we do is, we'll pull more families off the waiting list. We're going to have those briefings on the 5th and 12th of December, right here in the commission chambers. We plan on issuing 20 more vouchers to 20 more families, and hopefully, what we hope by the end of the, and what I expect, it'll be more like the end of January, that we'll have those 20 families on our system, which will get us over our goal of 500. So, just want to let you know, our assisted housing program, and through the guidance of Tracy here, are doing a fantastic job in trying to get people housed in our community, and I know that's been a goal of the homeless committee that Mayor Charles has put together as well. Let's move on, then, to a quick update from our BZA meeting that was held on Tuesday this week. There was a conditional use permit application submitted to the BZA for a tattoo studio within this downtown footprint, the city of Ashland. That hearing was held on Tuesday, as we mentioned. There were about 14 people in attendance. The issue was discussed back and forth. There were four folks there who were in support, one who was against. The presentation was made after the proprietor had discussed their plans with several of the neighboring businesses there on 15th Street, and the address is 335 15th Street. If you know where Sweet Peace Bakery is, used to be Tempted's Bakery, there's a retail space that's been open beside that for several years. That's the space they'll occupy. Most of the neighboring businesses' concerns were met during those conversations with the proprietor. We did have one from the senior center who came to object to the project, but after he heard the presentation live, even his, you know, his hesitation was tempered a little bit. While they still objected, I think they're a little more, their concerns are not quite as strong as they were before. So, the vote, the board then voted and approved it unanimously to move ahead with that studio. So, as of now, we will, on that, at that address, 335 15th Street, if the project moves forward, which we believe it will, we'll have our first tattoo studio in downtown Ashland when they open sometime in Q1. And I said I would keep it short, and of course, we've got six divisions in CED, but I thought I'd limit it to those two for this presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them for you.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
Good job. Thank you.
Our next report is Director of Engineering, Director Atkins. He's going to give us a brief report on the Christmas light, or lighting, I should say.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up and give a quick update on our Christmas lights. So, the new lights on Winchester Avenue are now running on a new system. We do still have a few lights that we're working through warranty issues on, and we also have a few others that have been long-term trouble spots. We're currently working with AEP to find solutions for those. And I'll say, just like any new system, there have been a few small bugs to work out, but overall, I think that the Christmas lighting is looking excellent this year. Draw your attention to the slide. So, the slide before that was a picture of Central Park, and I think that just really shows how beautiful the park is at this time of year. I also want to say, I think it's a great tradition that Ashland does, and it truly brings a festive feel to the whole community. These pictures up here on the screen are from our downtown area. I want to take a moment and brag on how good the tree at 16th Street looks, along with the new lighting that we've added at Broadway Square, and along with the images that we have here of the decorative pole lighting that we have through the downtown area. And that's about all I had. Quick little update, if anyone has any questions or concerns.
When you say you worked out the problems there, you had a team, I know, of electrical engineers that helped you do that. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So, as part of the Streetscape project, the pole lighting was upgraded to 240 volts with new LED light fixtures. This replaced the old halogen lights that we have throughout other areas of the city. Because of that upgrade, the original 120-volt power supply that our decorative Christmas lights rely on, it was no longer available. So, earlier in the year to address this, we completed a small project to restore the required 120-volt power supply to the outlets on the poles. And this was done so through pole-mounted transformers, which were installed to step the power down from 240 volts to 120 volts. And that power supply now feeds the new outlets that we have, and those new outlets are also the ones that the Christmas lights are plugged into today.
And is that also, you know, for all the events that we have, so the, you know, everybody can plug in lower and all that, like POG landing and-
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, POG landing, we actually utilized these outlets that we installed earlier in the year. But, yeah, as part of the Streetscape project, it upgraded the power supply, and we had to bring it back down to 120 to make it usable for Christmas outlets that run on 120.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
A fine job.
Absolutely. Thank you, Barry.
Barry, can you maybe give us an idea who helped you with this? Maybe some folks from engineering and streets? Give some recognition to them?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this was definitely a group effort project. Special thanks to Mike Garland, or he led the charge on the design for this, and we actually did the CAD model and the plans in-house, and we ended up using Mueller Electric. We put this out for proposals, and we received four to five proposals from companies all within 50 miles of the city building. So, we used local workers as well to do the work.
Great. Good deal. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any others?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Let's move into our public participation. This is an opportunity for individuals to address the commission, there are things that are not on the agenda, but if anyone would like to speak, we would take one person per subject, and you're allowed five minutes, and you'd be indicated by a green light that you're okay, and a red light, you're out of time. We give five minutes. You'll state your name and your address, sir.
My name is Scott Martin. I'm the president and CEO of the Northeast Kentucky Chamber of Commerce. Came by, I lost Sidney. Came by for a couple of things. Just a quick update, we've had a busy about 16 or 18 months. We've gotten four-state awards on growth and community engagement and our manners of connecting to everyone with our newsletter. Things are going great. Numbers are higher than they've been in 10, 12 years, so we're very optimistic with the growth of the chamber, but we wanted to thank you all for their support, not just what you do for us because we are the chamber, but because I always know we have an open ear we can talk to, and we have great communication going with everybody within the city, and we just wanted to say thanks. I also wanted to introduce, we've built the team pretty solid down over at the chamber now, and Sidney Pierce is our new Chief Operating Officer, and I know many of you all have met her at events, but I just want to give her a chance to say hey to you and let you all get to know Sidney.
Thank you all so much for having me. It's great to see most of you all again. Thank you so much for making my first five months of the chamber so fantastic. It's truly great to have such a wonderful relationship with you all. Before I get started, I just wanted to mention that I had a group of 17 Blazer students downtown for a field trip, and they all loved the Christmas music, so I wanted to say thank you to Mayor Charles for that project. Also, I just wanted to mention an upcoming event that we have at the chamber. We are getting all of our local businesses involved in Shop Small Saturday or Small Business Saturday. We're going to be doing that through our second annual Hot Cocoa Crawl, and that will take place on Small Business Saturday, November 29th. That's going to be from 10- will take place on Small Business Saturday, November 29th. That's going to be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. If you all know of any businesses that might be interested in participating, I'd love to hear that. And also, I'd love to see you all participate as well. It's going to be a really fun event. Again, I just want to echo what Scott says. Thank you all so much for, for all of your support. Thank you.
Scott, thanks for the, for the work that you and Sidney have done to grow the membership of the chamber, all the work that you guys do in the community for local businesses and for the city itself. So thank you for all yours work.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Thanks, Mr. Warren.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, anyone else like to address the commission?
Hello.
I'm sorry. You'll state your name and your address.
My name is Mary Ann Galloway, and I'm here as a member of the Boyd County Republican Women's Club. And I'd like to talk to you about the issue, the 1939 issue about tattoos, not tattoos, fortune telling in.
Well, and that's on the agenda. You'll, you would have an opportunity to speak about that here in a few minutes.
That'd be better to wait.
Just wait, and we'll, we'll get to you.
Okay, then I'll just say thanks to the firemen and the policemen for their service.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, anyone else?
So we'll have her come back up and speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Mike Maynard, Hillcrest Bruce Mission, 1819 Eloise. It is Thanksgiving season, and it started for us in October with signups. We are very blessed to be able to receive CBDG grant money from you all each year. That money gets used mostly to purchase food for our food pantry and for our Thanksgiving boxes. And so this, this year, we had 339 folks in our neighborhood that signed up for help with Thanksgiving. It was even more pronounced this year, of course, because of just the issue with food stamps last month and just people scared whether they were going to get them or not. And some folks still are just waiting to get theirs. And so it costs, costs a lot of money to be able to do that many Thanksgiving baskets. We are very blessed, though. Between United Way and the National Wildlife Turkey Federation, we were able to get 228 turkeys from them. Didn't, didn't cost us anything to get those because of their generosity. We also received some funding from AEP Foundation to help with the Thanksgiving in our food pantry. Facing Hunger Food Bank also donated to us, and also Marathon. So we're, we're very blessed. But money alone doesn't do it. We have, we have a lot of senior citizens that are homebound that we deliver food to, monthly food and commodity boxes every month, and that's a little over 300 boxes that we deliver the last two weeks of every month. Well, those folks, most of them will get Thanksgiving also. So that puts us at about 450 boxes that we have to deliver. And we started this last Monday. And so we have to get them all done by Wednesday. So far, we have delivered 229 of those boxes. So we're, we're on good pace. But I had a family yesterday that came by. They, they've been longtime volunteers, but her, her husband, and her mother-in-law all came in different vehicles yesterday and delivered 71 boxes of food to our homebound seniors. And that, it's that kind of stuff that makes it possible to make sure that we get food out to people before Thanksgiving. And so it, it is just, it's true. We've got Cornerstone Methodist Church has done a food drive for us. Gateway Church did a food drive. Malibu Jacks is doing a food drive for us. We've had individuals just drop by with food to us. And so just a huge thanks to you all, to the businesses here, and to the individuals, and to the churches for making it possible for us to make sure that everybody who signs up to get help with food is able to get it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for all you do.
Mike, when do you do the, the Christmas store?
So next week, we start building the Christmas store. And, and that, you know, there's angel trees and giving trees out there, and we do a similar program for our neighborhood. And a lot of times, you think, you know, we'll just, we're going to swoop in and get Christmas presents and, and save the day. And years ago, I had a dad came to pick up Christmas gifts. And he said, man, he said, you know, I hate that I have to get help, and I can't do this myself. And so sometimes we don't think about that part of it. And so all year long, we save up Christmas donations, trees, wreaths, wrapping paper, knickknacks, ornaments, clothing, movies, books, and then every toy that's new or like-new. And starting the first Tuesday of December, we start the Christmas store. We'll have five to six schools and other businesses that'll come in next week to help us build the store. We run that store from that Tuesday all the way up the day before Christmas Eve. And Christmas trees are five bucks. Brand-new toys are 250. Like-new toys are 50 cents. Electronics are five bucks. It's very affordable. It enables a parent to say, I bought Christmas for my kid. And last year, we sold over 8,000 items.
Wow.
For the Christmas store. And that helps us, then, for kids who sign up with us and senior citizens who do our Adopt a Senior program to get gifts, so.
Makes a true difference.
Yeah. So we'll start building next week. So if anybody wants to come out and help, we'll be restocking all day, all night for the next three weeks.
Thanks again. Thanks again. All right, any others? Oh, hearing none, we'll move into our old business. Mr. Wheeler, item A.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending the City of Ashland Flexible Spending Plan adopted by ordinance number 86, 2020, as previously amended, as recommended by McGregor &amp; Associates, Inc., pursuant to federal guidelines.
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Community Assistance Referral Service, Inc., CARES, the sub-recipient of $40,000 for the office renovation from the Community Development Block Grant.
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hillcrest Bruce Mission, the sub-recipient of $50,000 for HVAC replacement and installation from the Community Development Block Grant.
So move.
Second. And a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute an amendment number two to the agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Strand Associates, Inc., retaining Strand to provide engineering services for final design and construction services for the wastewater treatment plant expansion and improvements project.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item E.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Wiser Industrial Coatings, Inc., for the Logtown Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $502,170 for the Department of Utilities.
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Ashland and William D. Ingalls and Janet M. Ingalls Family Living Revocable Trust for the purchase by the city of a portion of the William D. Ingalls and Janet M. Ingalls Family Living Revocable Trust property, a portion of Lot 40 of the Means and Russell Iron Company's Belfont Furnace Land located on Bodice Drive in Boyd County, Kentucky, in the amount of $16,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents associated with and/or necessary to complete said purchase of real property.
So move.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland and Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating for the Spring Park Sanitary Sewer Pollard Mills Infrastructure Phase Four Project in the amount of $767,488 for the Department of Utilities.
So move.
Second. Second, okay.
I would just comment that on those three items, we're spending $1.2 million of utility fund monies on these projects.
All those half-tears. Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and approving change order number two between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and CJ Hughes Construction Company, Inc., for the 2022 Water and Sewer Capital Improvements Plan Sewer Lining and Repair Project, decreasing the contract in the amount of $22,534.78.
So move.
Second.
Second.
It's always good to see a decrease. Always. All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item I, we probably need to.
Move to table until tomorrow. I think we're going to recess this meeting.
Yes.
And give it second reading after we've adopted the other two ordinances, the replacement ordinances.
Okay, a motion. Did you make that? Your motion to table?
Motion to table till tomorrow.
Second.
I'll make a second.
Any discussion? Yeah, this allows it where the other one's in place, and we're not without something in, not covered. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Let's move into our consent agenda.
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, and approving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of November 20, 2025.
So move. Move.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Could we have some discussion on the, there are a lot of items on here that involve an awful lot of money, Mr. City Managers, you're well aware.
I would like to request an update on O. On line item O there, that's the Environmental Consulting Services for CED. Kind of just get a status of where that's at.
Can you come up, Mr. Pullman?
We can prepare something for you and give it out to the commission if you'd like.
Okay.
Well, you know, along those lines, it looked, this money's being spent for assessment of these brownfield issues. It does not address remediation, you know?
Yeah.
We're, we're identifying problems we already know exist, when I'd like to see money being spent to, to resolve them.
Well, would you want your?
And I'm not telling Mr. Pullman anything he doesn't know.
Just procedurally, the, the grant is an assessment grant. So we can only spend those monies on assessment, but it's, it's usually a two-phase process. So we do the assessment grant. Once we get the assessment information, that qualifies us to apply for the remediation grant, the cleanup grants. And that's what we're working on now.
Ready to go when this is done?
We will. Yeah, we will. That's our, our consultant, Lineback Funkhauser, are helping us prepare all the documentation for when we submit our, our cleanup grant. Can we table this item until we get an update on it?
Well, it's just the, I mean, this is all grant money, right?
This is federal grant money, EPA grant money, yeah.
I don't know that we need to stop the assessment, but.
Well, I'm just, I'm talking about table the payment until we, until we find out.
Well, we'd have to do it again to be able to go, I mean, bring it on again to do the abatement on it, right?
Well, I, I think what, what you might be saying is you want to pull that off consent and table it until after you receive an update? Is that what you're, before you, this is just paying the invoice that they have?
Yeah, it's just an invoice payment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Sure.
All right, the motion's on the table to table item O.
Until a report is received.
Correct. I mean, if we get the report today, we could vote on it tomorrow, table it till tomorrow. I mean, we just, I would just like to know an update on it. I mean, I, we've, we've had updates in the past, and we just haven't heard anything recently.
So can the motion be contingent that the invoice be paid upon receipt of the report?
Yeah, I'd demand that, say that.
I second that motion.
Okay, good. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll add that for our meeting tomorrow.
I've got some other.
Okay.
Items I'd like to ask about.
Go ahead.
On item G, Mr. Grub, where's that money coming from? Is that an ARPA expenditure?
I think it's coming out of the utility fund. Is that correct, Ms. Vich? Finance?
Yes, it's coming.
It's coming out of the utility fund.
And it's budgeted.
Yes.
If you have more questions, others come up.
The engineering work for that project is out of the utility fund, but the actual construction funds is used with our ARPA money.
And that's the next couple items, right?
Yes.
Does that answer your question on the other?
It did.
Okay.
Okay.
Any others?
Well, I, I got one answered by the police chief before the meeting. I, I wasn't real sure what energy weapons were under item K. I think in vernacular, those are tasers. Item N, is that a budgeted item, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, these are, it is budgeted.
Yes, they are. Yes.
And the money sources on item Q.
That would be the utility fund.
Budgeted under the utility fund? One other thing, on item S, we're recommending appointment of two maintenance workers, and the fiscal note reflects 63,000. That is for one position. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
And these are existing positions, not newly created positions?
Yes.
How long have they been vacant?
One, not too long. Sean can probably answer that better.
More or less. Since January, we did a lot of restructuring. This is the trickle-down, so we've had vacancies.
So we've saved the budget, whatever money would have been paid during that 11-month period?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on items? B minus O. So all of the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move into our penning ceremony. If the, Mr. Rakes, if you all would like to come up, and firefighter Seth Rakes, if you come up with your family?
All right, let me introduce. Firefighter Seth Rakes began his employment with the City of Ashland Fire Department on September 15th in 2014. He has obtained his IFSAC certification as a driver operator, Level One firefighter instructor, and holds an associate degree in applied science. He will be promoted to engineer effective November 23rd, 2025. His assignment will be first platoon engine one. Seth Rakes, would you raise your right hand? To you, firefighter Seth Rakes, solemnly swear to continue to serve the citizens of the City of Ashland in your new capacity in a compassionate manner with courage and integrity, to put others before you, and to accept the sacrifices needed to serve our community. And if you do so, to uphold the laws and the Constitution of the United States, the Commonwealth of Kentucky. of Kentucky, and the City of Ashland, so help you God, if you answer, I will, I will. Congratulations. Thanks, sir.
All right, let's hit a shot. Seth. Second. Mr. Wheeler, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Employee Assistance Program Management Agreement between the City of Ashland and Ashland Hospital Corporation, D B A U K Kings Daughters Medical Center, adopted by ordinance number 190 series of 2022, as previously amended by ordinance number 13, 2023.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Gullett Sanitation Services, Inc. for the Ashland Water Treatment Plant Removal and De-watering of Reservoir Solids Project, increasing the contract in the amount of $134,856.12 for the Department of Utility Operations.
So move.
Second. So this increase, was this increase requested by the city for additional work to be done?
Commissioner Reimer, what this is, is originally, this reservoir's not been cleaned out for a handful of years, six or eight years, and this is basically, we didn't really know what the bid item was going to come in at, and when it came in, much lower than what we budgeted, which is the amount, the 225, 225,000 we amounted, the amount that was budgeted. What we did was, we wanted to take advantage of the contractor while they're there. We suspect that there's significantly more solids than what we budgeted for, but we had no idea of the cost when we first started this. So what we want to do is be able to get the most bang for our buck and remove as much solids as possible this time. It'll give us a baseline going forward. We're tracking this by numerous means now, but through this, but also through, we do a survey every year with a hydrographic survey, where they go in and measure the bottom to see how much solids are in there. But long story short, we want to be able to take as much solids as we can out at this time, and then do another, maybe it's two, three, five years in the future, we do another one of these, and it'll give us a little bit better baseline of how much we need to remove it the next time. We don't know if this is going to be a small portion of the solids, or a significant portion of the solids. We, honestly, my opinion is it's going to be, it's going to knock, it's going to make a difference, but it's not a huge amount of the solids that are in the reservoir.
Still under budget.
Yes, it's the budgeted amount.
I would point out, the original approved budget is 225,000.
Yes, that is what we budgeted for.
We thought we were saving a lot of money when we adopted the contract at $90,000. I'm not being critical of.
No, I understand.
But do we know we're going to spend the whole 134,000?
No, we will only spend what they remove. So if by chance they get in there and they come to us and say, hey, good news.
Up to 225.
Good news, there's not near as many solids in there as what we thought, we will only spend what they actually take out.
And it was 2016.
Yeah, and it was a, no, I think it was even earlier than that, I mean.
It was when I was acting city manager.
Yeah. I remember all the trucks coming off the hill.
And Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin, I know you realize, and you remember how expensive that project ended up being.
Up there every day.
So this is going to be a little bit more exploratory type surgery, a little bit more delicate the way that we do it, because they're actually going to kind of dredge those solids out of there and then handle them on the bank. We're not going to have any equipment in there to damage concrete and all that anymore. So we think we found a lot better method to do this, so we feel this is going to be much more successful than the last time.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Do you know where they're going to take the solids?
We actually have a permit, it's called a beneficial use, beneficial reuse permit. We're going to store the solids, we have, it's spelled out in our permit, we're allowed to store those solids around the water plant. At some point, what we hope to do is to be able to open that up to allow people to come and get those solids and use them.
It's actually good for agricultural purposes.
Yes, so, and we will use it on our own dress-ups and stuff, on water line replacement, those types of things. So ultimately, that stuff in the past went to the landfill.
Right.
So this is going to be a significant savings over that. We'll probably look to with your all's guidance, doing some type of a three-week-end type deal where we have a piece of equipment up there and somebody can come, we'll gladly load them, load their truck up. There just has to be manifest work and that type of stuff to keep track of it for the division of water.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Pullman.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Gullett Sanitation Services, Inc. for the Ashland Water Treatment Plant Removal and De-watering of Reservoir Solids Project, increasing the contract in the amount of $134,856.12 for the Department of Utility Operations.
So move.
Second. So this increase, was this increase requested by the city for additional work to be done?
Commissioner Reimer, what this is, is originally, this reservoir's not been cleaned out for a handful of years, six or eight years, and this is basically, we didn't really know what the bid item was going to come in at, and when it came in, much lower than what we budgeted, which is the amount, the 225, 225,000 we amounted, the amount that was budgeted. What we did was, we wanted to take advantage of the contractor while they're there. We suspect that there's significantly more solids than what we budgeted for, but we had no idea of the cost when we first started this. So what we want to do is be able to get the most bang for our buck and remove as much solids as possible this time. It'll give us a baseline going forward. We're tracking this by numerous means now, but through this, but also through, we do a survey every year with a hydrographic survey, where they go in and measure the bottom to see how much solids are in there. But long story short, we want to be able to take as much solids as we can out at this time, and then do another, maybe it's two, three, five years in the future, we do another one of these, and it'll give us a little bit better baseline of how much we need to remove it the next time. We don't know if this is going to be a small portion of the solids, or a significant portion of the solids. We, honestly, my opinion is it's going to be, it's going to knock, it's going to make a difference, but it's not a huge amount of the solids that are in the reservoir.
And still under budget.
Yes, it's the budgeted amount.
I would point out, the original approved budget is 225,000.
Yes, that is what we budgeted for.
We thought we were saving a lot of money when we adopted the contract at $90,000. I'm not being critical of.
No, I understand.
But do we know we're going to spend the whole 134,000?
No, we will only spend what they remove. So if by chance they get in there and they come to us and say, hey, good news.
Up to 225.
Good news, there's not near as many solids in there as what we thought, we will only spend what they actually take out.
And it was 2016.
Yeah, and it was a, no, I think it was even earlier than that, I mean.
It was when I was acting city manager.
Yeah. I remember all the trucks coming off the hill.
And Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin, I know you realize, and you remember how expensive that project ended up being.
Up there every day.
So this is going to be a little bit more exploratory type surgery, a little bit more delicate the way that we do it, because they're actually going to kind of dredge those solids out of there and then handle them on the bank. We're not going to have any equipment in there to damage concrete and all that anymore. So we think we found a lot better method to do this, so we feel this is going to be much more successful than the last time.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Do you know where they're going to take the solids?
We actually have a permit, it's called a beneficial use, beneficial reuse permit. We're going to store the solids, we have, it's spelled out in our permit, we're allowed to store those solids around the water plant. At some point, what we hope to do is to be able to open that up to allow people to come and get those solids and use them.
It's actually good for agricultural purposes.
Yes, so, and we will use it on our own dress-ups and stuff, on water line replacement, those types of things. So ultimately, that stuff in the past went to the landfill.
Right.
So this is going to be a significant savings over that. We'll probably look to with your all's guidance, doing some type of a three-week-end type deal where we have a piece of equipment up there and somebody can come, we'll gladly load them, load their truck up. There just has to be manifest work and that type of stuff to keep track of it for the division of water.
Excellent.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Pullman.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and B W C Trucking, Inc. for the purchase of gravel, stone, and sand for the Department of Public Services and the Department of Utilities.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Do we have any idea what we're actually going to be buying?
Yeah, I got it pulled up here. I got the prices, which I found to be.
Yeah, we got prices, but I mean, how much are we actually going to spend?
I don't have that data available right in front of me.
Do we have what's been spent in the past that would give us some kind of an estimate? Do we have an amount that was budgeted?
Item D, none.
On the cost of gravel, sand, and stone?
Now, I'll double check, take a look at it.
I mean, we'll adopt it, I was just curious what estimated expense is going to be.
I'll find out, make sure we get a better.
And why do we split it between utility and?
Because different departments use it.
Oh, okay, got you.
Well, I found to be.
It is bid per unit, so.
Yeah.
The different sized stones cost different amounts. A ton is a ton, I always thought.
Got to break them down, yeah. Big rocks and little rocks.
I guess they're more scarce, bigger rocks than us.
Okay, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number one between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Southern Ohio Trenching and Excavating, Inc., decreasing the amount of the contract for the Spring Park Sanitary Sewer Project in the amount of $604,572 for the Department of Utility Operations.
So move.
Second.
Finally, a decreased one.
Is there some reason we didn't bid it originally as an insert instead of the way we bid it?
Commissioner, I think originally, but you can come up. I think we thought that the line was six inches, and it turns out it's eight inches. I think we can line an eight inch, not a six.
So there's more room to put.
Yes.
Yeah, the six inch you couldn't do, right?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Tell us how you found that out. I personally jumped into the manhole. I was lowered into the manhole and got down there with the tape measure and found that the line was, in fact, an eight inch, not a six inch.
Now that's dedication.
Yeah, that's a $604,000 savings.
And that's a very difficult job ahead of you.
Yeah.
I know that. It's behind all those houses on 29th Street, right?
Yeah, yeah, tough spot.
We'll certainly appreciate your efforts.
Absolutely.
Glad we didn't lose you in the manhole.
Yeah, got to watch out for those sewer rings.
Could have had a blockage over there if you were there. Are there other locations that maybe we've looked at and assumed they were six inch, but they could have been eight inches, and we can line them?
I'm sure there are. Our mapping, to be completely honest, our mapping's not great. We're still working on it. We actually, our GIS guy works on it every day, updating mapping. But yeah, there absolutely could be lines that we think are six inch, but are in fact not six inch. And then vice versa, we could have lines that we think are eight, but are actually six.
Good work.
Yeah, I just, I just want everybody to realize, through his efforts, saved us 600, over $600,000. And utilities as well.
Thank you, Barry.
All right.
Thank you, Barry, Mark.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the City of Ashland's 2023 Community Development Block Grant, C D B G Annual Action Plan Amendment Three to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for approval and implementation.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
This resulted from the committee meeting that we had, had a citizen participation deal.
Excellent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the amended loan documents.
So move.
Second. This is just a changing wording, right? That's all it's doing?
Yes, this is a little bit of a restructure that Mr. Pullman and Mr. Reisner worked with me directly on, in an effort to try to make it a little bit more manageable for the city, and also trying to figure out a way to process these type of loans in a little bit more economic-friendly fashion to the city. Still provides that there are certain reporting requirements and certain things we check in on, but we won't have to contract directly with a third party. You know, it's a little bit more like what FiveCo does, for instance.
Okay, okay, very good.
And I appreciate their efforts very much.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the substantial amendment to the combined 2025 to 2029 consolidated.
All right, item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky amending minority loan number twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five M zero zero one documents originally adopted by ordinance number eighteen, series of twenty twenty-five, to M and J's Rowan Cafe LLC in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to be paid from the Community Development Block Grant Funds and authorizing the mayor to execute the amended loan documents.
So move.
Second.
Second. This is just a changing wording, right? It's all it's doing?
Yes, it is a, a little bit of a restructure that Mr. Palm and Mr. Eisner worked with me directly on, uh, in an effort to try to make it a little bit more manageable for the city and also trying to, trying to figure out a way to process these type of loans in a little bit more economic friendly fashion to the city. Still provides that, that there are certain reporting requirements and certain things we check in on, but we won't have to contract directly with a third party. You know, it's a little bit more like what FiveCo does, for instance.
Okay, okay, very good.
And I appreciate their efforts very much.
All right, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item I.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the substantial amendment to the combined twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine consolidated plan and the twenty twenty-five annual action plan for a community development block grant to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and upon acceptance of said plans from HUD to execute on behalf of the city of Ashland in agreement with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to enable the city to undertake these activities and/or any and all documents associated with the grant's submittal.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item J.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number one between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Judy Construction Company for the Johnson Fork Bogus Drive and Florida Street Water Booster, Booster Station decreasing the contract in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents for the Department of Utilities.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item K.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky amending ordinance number one oh one, series of nineteen eighty-six as previously amended by amending Article sixteen definitions to incorporate the definition and land use regulations related to fortune telling services and amending the table of permitted and conditional uses.
So move.
Second.
First and a second, discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your consideration of this.
You'll state your name and your address, ma'am?
I'm sorry, my name is Mary Ann Galloway, I live on Meadow Lane in the county. And, um, I'm, I'm really a citizen of the tri-state. I was born in Huntington, I lived most of my life in Lawrence County, Ohio, and I've moved over here to the last days of my life. And, um, and I appreciate Ashland for many years. In my other life, I was a school nurse and I have a great concern for children and the depression and anxiety that they suffer from daily. And my concern with this change of, of, I don't want to take away anybody's right or freedom of speech, but I do think that we need to be aware of the, the families of our, of our whole area. And, um, kids today talk about depression and anxiety as many of us talk about what are we going to have for supper tonight or what are we going to, what, what's your day at work like? And, um, this rise in, um, in the children's misunderstanding, the depreciation of the family, I think are great concerns for all of us. So, um, in regard to this amendment, I have some suggestions that I would like for you to consider in this ordinance, um, to protect families and youth and children so that, um, families don't lose their control of their kids any more than they have already. First of all, I'd like for you to define that this is an entertain. She asked for this to be entertainment. And so I would like for it to be restricted to people age-wise, maybe twenty-one, that , um, they, they have an opportunity then to understand what they're dealing with when they're dealing with these kinds of things. Number two, I'd like you to restrict the areas that the establishments might be established in, the businesses might be established in, maybe a thousand feet from the entrances of all schools, libraries, parks, malls, places of worship, or any other public, public place that youth could gather. Number three, I'd like for there to be large visible signs inside and out posted at such establishments stating that the intent of the business is for entertainment only and that there are no guarantees for outcomes of future events. This is one of the things that, that concerned me most. Like palm reading, a kid that's depressed and find out that their lifeline is not very long. These kinds of things lead to suicide in young people that do not always understand. All businesses should be completely licensed, properly licensed, stating that they are entertainment. And I'd like for all fees and taxes and other license comply with all the other entertainment businesses such as fire prevention, safety and health issues. We have a responsibility to protect youth and family, not only the people in Ashland, but for the people in all the county. Like I say, I'm a person of the tri-state. My dad and my husband both retired from Armco and I have a son that worked there too. So, um, I hope you respect and understand that this is a center that, I mean, I've shopped in Ashland, I remember Parsons, duh. It's, it's, this is a thing that affects us, it's a tri-state area as well as in Ashland. So, I, I hope that you consider our, our recommendations, um, not from an aspect of trying to take away somebody's right to speak, but for protection of our family, our families, and that Ashland is a good place to come. It's a great city and I appreciate being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Any others?
Well, I'd like to comment. I understand the legalities of this, I come from a, a long line and I think about Thanksgiving dinners in the past and I remember Thanksgiving dinners around the Thanksgiving table where there was seven lawyers around the Thanksgiving table in my family. I'm well, well aware of the legalities of this issue and we have to vote to keep us out of court. Any court challenges, we have to respect the public and their taxpayer money. But this issue is kind of complex because it's a, a business issue versus a religious issue and how they intersect. And so my job as a city commissioner is to protect the health and safety and quality of life of, of the citizens of our, of our city. And I have to ask myself, does this improve the quality of life? Or does it damage it to some degree? I have to ask myself, does it promote the health of our community? Does it protect the public at large? Does it protect the most vulnerable, our children and our youth? I've coached for the last fifty-two years, twenty-two years at the high school level. And I don't want any student or any child to be misled or harmed by any entity that comes within our city. Finally, I'm thankful for the care and concern and the thoughtful action by our planning commission and their advice to regulate and to restrict this to those over eighteen years old. However, I have to oppose this however it's crafted. Uh, city commissioner and coach are just two of the hats I wear. I'm also the president of the Ashland Area Ministerial Association, which represents eighty churches within our borders. We have a long, rich history and heritage here. Ashland was founded on our faith community. We're out of these books in the, in the office, but if you read this book on the history of Ashland, they called Ashland the, the city of seven Sundays. And so it was, the faith community is heavily woven into the fabric of our city. We celebrate this time of year called Christmas and we're thankful for the lights and the decorations on our streets and in our homes and, and so forth. It's the coming of the Christ, not the crystal. And so in scripture, we're warned to have nothing to do with anything of divination, whether it's Old Testament or New Testament, either one. So I can in good faith vote for this as I represent not only the city, but our churches and our children. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we'll call for a vote. So, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Like that? All right, uh, item L.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city of Ashland, Kentucky repealing Title thirteen General Offenses, Chapter one thirty, offenses against public peace and safety, Section one thirty dot O two, fortune telling of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Ashland, Kentucky and amending Title eleven Business Regulations, Chapter one nineteen, Other Businesses by adding Sections one nineteen dot seven zero and one nineteen dot seven one regarding fortune telling to other businesses in the Code of Ordinances of the city of Ashland.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Now, as the notes point out, this restricts the business to those over eighteen.
Correct.
And limits it to business districts. This, this is not, this is a business issue, not in my mind, a religious issue in terms of the action that's been taken. And there's no intent to adversely affect anybody or their religion.
I agree with you, Mr. Martin. Any other comments?
So explain this, could you explain this, expound on this a little bit more? What this?
Maybe the city attorney ought to explain.
Sure. What, is there anything specific you'd like me to explain or just the entire setup?
Just the entire overview.
Sure. So the recommendation, uh, you know, this obviously came before the commission initially upon threat of litigation about a violation of constitutional rights due to a, a complete ban of that, that nineteen thirty-nine ordinance was completely banned, uh, certain types of practices including fortune telling and palmistry. Upon doing research, uh, myself, Legal Department and American Legal Publishing that publishes our ordinances online, it was suggested that ordinance be repealed due to concerns for constitutional violation. During the course of that research, uh, between Legal Department and also CED, uh, and this was sent to Planning Commission based upon this board's request. Planning Commission held a hearing, uh, there was literally no public input whatsoever. You've had more public input today than what happened at the Planning Commission. The only member of the public that showed up to the Planning Commission meeting was Aaron Snyder of the Ashland Daily Independent. There was no other attendance from the public. The Planning Commission deliberated on this amongst themselves for about an hour and a half. They had very productive discussion, they had, um, ample questions. The recommendations they came up with were generally twofold. One was that this be restricted to anyone, basically no fortune telling services shall be conducted on any person under, under the age of eighteen. That was one of their recommendations. And I'll just generally read, if you have any questions about the other parts, I'm happy to try to explain them. They do mirror, are not part of the adult use, but they do mirror the adult use language in some respect. Uh, and that adult use language, we recently saw, as Mr. Palm pointed out, how that works with the conditional use permit process at BZA this week. So, in, in, as far as permitted districts, and this is, keep in mind, this is only, as Commissioner Martin correctly stated a minute ago, this is a regulation of business services, so fee-based services. This is not meant in any way to restrict anyone's right, uh, First Amendment rights or free speech rights or, or rights through religious practices. This is simply a fee-based service regulation, just like we regulate many, many types of businesses within the city. But under fortune telling, it says permitted districts, fortune telling services may be, may be permitted as a conditional use, meaning it would need to go to the BZA for a conditional use permit, in the B two zoning district as a permitted use in the B three zoning district subject to the same standards. So B three would be permitted, but, uh, with the same restrictions that I'm about to explain. And B two zoning district, that would need to be a conditional use and get a conditional use permit. There are dimensional requirements. Fortune telling services shall comply with dimensional requirements of the district in which the use is located, parking and loading, off-street parking and loading requirements shall comply with several, several articles that are listed generally in the codes. It's really not relevant to what you're asking about, so I'll move on. Then the last part, other standards. A, no fortune telling service may operate within three hundred feet of any residential zone. That's regardless if it's in B two or B three, conditional use or permitted use. Cannot operate within, it would not operate, assuming this would pass, it would not be able to operate within three hundred feet of any residential zone. B, no fortune telling service may operate within three hundred feet of any public, private or parochial school, library, park, playground, church, or other places where minors tend to congregate. Again, applies whether it's in the B two as a conditional use or B three as a permitted use. C, no fortune telling service may operate within three hundred foot radius of two other such uses. So, very limited as far as how many could be on the same block, for instance. That, uh, I believe the planning commission's thought on that was to try to cut down on a, you know, a, a large area of the same type of use. And then D, advertisements, displays or other promotional materials shall not be shown or exhibited so as to be visible to the public from public right of ways or from such public semi-public pedestrian walkways. Such displays shall be considered as signs, permitted signs shall be limited to those whose copy includes only the name of the business, place, organization, building or person it identifies, and the size and the location of such signs are controlled by ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-twelve. And that was generally the, the changes that, uh, the Planning Commission had suggested and that's how it would structurally work. And again, that is not meant to restrict anyone's practice, religious practices or anything of that sort. It is a regulation for performing fee-based services.
And it's a conditional use, to get a permit, you got to go to the BZA, explain all of the things that Mr. Wheeler addressed and get permission of the BZA to have the business.
In B, in B two, in B three, it's a permitted use with those conditions.
With those conditions.
Thank you.
Good explanation.
And as far as we know, we've only had one interested party express any interest in this, uh, type of business.
I think it's important though that we do mention the BZA and the Planning Commission are both made up of citizen board, citizens throughout the community. Yeah, the, the Planning Commission, well.
Good point, Commissioner.
Will, will come up, actually, there's going to be an ordinance that's going to come before you in just a minute about the Planning Commission. That's currently, uh, made up of, of seven members of the, of the public, those are volunteers, just like code enforcement, just like, uh, BZA, just like, uh, Urban Renewal Board, like many of these boards. They are, they are not elected, they are appointed for certain terms suggested by the mayor, confirmed by the commission. Some of these folks that are on there were appointed by this commission, but many of them were appointed by prior commissions, as is typically the case.
And they serve without compensation.
And they serve with zero compensation.
Thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
I just thought it was good information for the public to know.
Absolutely.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Good.
All right.
And Mayor, I would also say, if there's any folks in the public that would like to discuss it, um, we sat down with Ms. Crawford, I believe that's the one interested party. Ms. Hudson and I both sat down with her and, and Assistant Counsel McKay. We've corresponded with her, she's asked numerous questions, I've had some other folks. Please reach out, I'm happy to discuss it with you and explain the research that we did and what we found.
And the input we've received has been considered in the work that's been done.
Yes, it has.
And we've received a lot of input.
Yes, sir.
Somebody lives above a business, which across the fair mouth they do, is that considered a residential district?
No, no, that's, that's a, there are residential uses that are permitted in certain business districts, but that is a dedicated business district.
All right, any other? Area number, call for a vote. All in favor? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Get it, Mr.? Okay. All right, item M.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending Section 3 of Ordinance Number 1, Series of 1967, previously amended by Ordinance Number 21, Series of 1968, which created a municipal planning commission by decreasing the number of planning commission members from nine to seven.
Someone, second.
That's just what he was talking about with our.
This is a no-brainer.
Yeah, correct. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item N.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Everett J. Prescott, Inc., in the amount of sixty-nine thousand two hundred and one dollars and fifty-nine cents for the insertion valves for water main repairs for the Thirteenth Street Underground Tank Project for the Department of Utilities.
Someone.
First and the second. Discussion?
Is this a budgeted item?
It is a budgeted item, I think we budget a million dollars for this category of items.
Okay. We had a second, correct?
Yep, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item O.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and AP3 LLC regarding operational control of the Paramount Arts Center for a period of five years, beginning January 1, 2026, in the amount of ten thousand dollars per month.
Someone.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Could we hear a little bit about what went into this negotiation, and who all was involved, and how we got here?
Sure. On the city's part, it's primarily the mayor and I that were attending those meetings and discussing with the parties. Obviously, the, the current state of the Paramount is it's under operational control of the Paramount Arts Center Nonprofit Board. That, that lease basically was a leaseback after the purchase at the, toward the end of last year, through the middle of this year, and then that got extended by this board to the end of this year. And then after that, there is no setup for operational control or leasing of that facility. In the discussion between different parties that had submitted, I think it was late last year, maybe earlier this year, to, to, Mr. Pullman and CED had sent out, I believe under the prior commission's direction, request for proposals for the operation of the Paramount. And of the three or four groups that had responded, there were discussions about maybe some of those groups might be able to work together. And during that process, basically, we, we may have found an opportunity here for potential sustainability. That's the goal, that's the goal that the mayor has been preaching, that I've been preaching in these, in these communications, is what, what is the most sustainable model moving forward? We did have some discussions with the Paramount Arts Center Nonprofit Corporation about continuing their leasehold, they needed some subsidized funds. AP3 has associated with Venue Works, that's a more regional-to-national company that has access to a lot of promoters. They run multiple conference centers, they run a few other Paramount Arts, Paramount Arts Theaters across, I think, the southeast. And in those discussions, there was a, a model proposed that the Paramount Board could work as sort of an advisory board and stay very involved with the Paramount going forward, and also have AP3 and Venue Works take on more of the operational and business side management of this. This contract is basically doing two things. It will allow AP3 with their subcontractor Venue Works to operate the Paramount after January on the business side and start scheduling shows and booking shows. It will also allow Venue Works to formally start consulting and booking shows on the conference center, so that, there's already interest in apparently booking conferences. And, and when that, the doors open on that, you want that to be booked up and start earning money. This is a request for funding for the first six months and for a continued management fee, so that hopefully this will become very sustainable within that time period. And that's, that's the pro forma that was submitted along with this, is that their general thoughts is they can make it self-sustaining within about six-month time period. That's about the lead time it sounds like they would need to really start booking shows. And that's the, that's the general gist of how this originated.
Well, I want to point out in the fiscal note, if you review that, funding source for this startup cost will be covered entirely through interest income earned on the twenty-five million dollar state appropriation that we've received for the Ashland Conference Center, and that no general fund revenues are required, and the principal balance of the state appropriation will remain intact. So I think that's, I mean, that's, that's a home run.
Yes.
For us, you know, that, that we can do this startup and not have any negative impact to the general fund.
We verified that too with the state.
Is there any provision in the contract to terminate if, if the performance is less than desirable, or?
Yeah, as, as with any contract, we'll, we'll be able to, you know, assuming they're not holding up to their end of the bargain. And I believe this is a managerial contract, but generally speaking, I think Venue Works works kind of on a monthly-type basis, so if it's not working out in, in relative short order.
This agreement is with AP3, and AP3 has an agreement with Venue.
AP3 is going, yeah, but a yearly budget will be submitted to this commission for review, along with financial information, whatever reporting.
And we'll have to approve it, right?
That's correct. And they've already provided a pro forma and some, you know, budgetary concerns, that's not what you're approving right now, but, you know, they've already kind of advised what they believe that's going to be for the next six months.
We received a communication from the Paramount late morning before the meeting started. None of us have had an opportunity to adequately review their comments. I'm not real sure that I'm ready to go forward with a second reading until we have adequate time intervene to consider all the options, and, not the options, but all the affected parties.
Well, we can, we can push this, the second reading to December.
Exactly.
I think that's what we need to do.
I'm, I'm, I would be in favor of giving first reading and delaying second reading to allow some time to get some public input and comment.
Yeah, if we recess for tomorrow.
And that this be available, obviously, as it is available, for review by all parties that are interested.
I agree with that. Any other comments?
Ms. Camfield, do you have any comments you want to make?
I think that, I can't speak for the Paramount Board Directors, but the staff is anxiously optimistic. You know, I've, I've not been there for, involved with every decision that has been made with regard to the sale of the Paramount, or the decisions that have unfolded afterward. But what the staff and I have been there for is every single event that we've brought to this community, the tourism, millions of dollars in economic development, all of the educational opportunities that, you know, the kids have been able to come. What the community, I think, needs to understand is that PAK Inc., the nonprofit that is currently, and has operated the Paramount for over fifty years now, we're making sure that local children in our community are able to come and see events when their parents can't afford for them to come. And we're offering voice lessons and acting lessons in the Paramount Players, and right now, at this very moment, those things are, are very uncertain. I understand that PAK Inc. will likely have to lay off staff as of December 31st. I just urge you as our local leaders and commission to think about those individuals, as well as think about the impact that this is going to have on our community, and work with the Paramount Nonprofit Board to come up with some sort of, sort of solution to make sure that we're continuing to have those important community arts activities in Ashland and, and in the greater Ashland region.
Well, it is certainly the intent of this board that the Paramount Board actively participate in advisory capacity and otherwise in the future. Have, have you and others on the board attended meetings with AP3 and, and the mayor and, and others discussing these matters?
We have had one meeting where we initially met a gentleman from Venue Works and sat down with AP3. There is a hope of a plan forward, there's just not been any real discussion or pen to paper at this point. And the, we just found out on Tuesday that PAK Inc. would no longer be operating the Paramount after December 31st, and therefore, you know, there's a lot of our volunteers that are learning about this by watching this today. They'll read about this on the front page of the paper tomorrow, and it's, it's tough, it's tough. We just have some work to do moving forward.
We're with you.
Those volunteers, it's been there thirty-plus years.
Yeah.
You have the Festival of Trees, it opens on Saturday, is that right?
It actually opens tomorrow morning, we have thousands of kids that will be at the Paramount in the next few days, and you should come check it out.
And we, we believe that will continue.
Your interests and the city's interests are the same.
I, I have, it's been my continued recommendation to this board and the prior board, that I don't, I don't think a belief is necessary. I would encourage you all that when we are, are looking to book shows, or, you know, when, whenever that's going to be, that that actually be part of a contract, that that be, that be part of the budget yearly. That's difficult to do over the next six months, you know, obviously, but I think when you're looking at a, at a budgetary-type constraint, those things have to stay in place. And there's been every representation from any, any group that, that I've talked to, that that's going to maintain, and I've tried to make it clear that my recommendation to any board, in, in any group, whether it be the Paramount, or AP3, or Venue Works, that whoever's going to be operating it at any time, those type of community events are going to have to be made available. Festival of the Trees and Trains, the Nutcracker from AYB, the Paramount Player Shows, they've got one doing Frozen next month, you know, those things have to stay.
We've always, we've always, you know, talked with them about that, that always came up in every meeting we had.
And the folks that are employed down there be utilized for the operation.
That, that volunteers stay active and be able to, to continue to be utilized. And if this is something that, that this board is interested in doing, I think it would also be appropriate to ask AP3 and Venue Works for written assurances of that. I, I don't believe that you.
Written in the contract, right?
I don't believe that we should just, yeah, I, I would like it to be, you know, contractual, because if it doesn't happen, then you can enforce it.
Right.
And that's been something that I've, you know, consistently recommended, that it not be up to, not that I don't trust anybody in particular, anything like that, but just to make it clear, so that it's clear to the public and clear to anybody that's interested, that these things are that important, that they're, they're a material part of any type of deal.
Well, every meeting that I've been in with them, that's always come up.
We're reaching the deadline of December 31st under the current agreement.
Right, correct. Correct. All right, any other discussion? All right, with that intention that we're going to move the, or postpone the second reading till December. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Item P.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, amending the rules and regulations for any special event occurring upon or within city property, streets, sidewalks, rights of way, and parks of the City of Ashland to be known and commonly referred to as the Special Event Ordinance, and repealing Ordinance Number 157, Series of 2020, as previously amended by Ordinance Number 103, Series of 2022, and Ordinance Number 178, Series of 2022.
Someone, second?
All right, and discussion?
Does the combination of these two ordinances achieve the concerns of Sawstone that were expressed?
I believe so. How are you doing, Mr. Rollin? We, we've met a couple times, I know he's talked with, with Chief Alley about some ABC issues. These changes are exactly what I think we discussed, basically making it so that on the EDC part, it's not automatically activated, it's only activated if and when a request is submitted by a special event applicant, and that's approved by the city. And that's basically it, those are the only changes that I've proposed.
Check the box.
And this, this allows for use of, of the food trucks without going through this process?
He'll, he'll still need to do the special event process, but the, the main concern that he had with that is.
And then the EDC.
Does it activate the EDC every time he does it? And this, these changes would essentially make it so that, no, and that would apply to anybody, so anybody that wants to have a special event in the downtown area, if they don't want the EDC to activate, then, you know, and incur the cost of the EDC, they don't have to incur that.
Have you heard from other businesses and, and tried to address their concerns in these amendments?
The only other business that I've heard from was here in this board meeting with Jerk Riley's, and I believe this, this would address any concern that they may have had with the EDC being open and.
Yeah, I, actually, I spoke with them myself, and they, they, based on our conversation, they were a hundred percent on board with what we were trying to do. Yeah, we met about this and spoke about it, and, and I think, yeah, that it was just, just the way it was written, it made it almost like any event anywhere, first of all, if any, any event on public property, you have to have a special event permit, and if there's a special event permit for anything, it activates the EDC. So, yeah, I just think that it was a, just to decouple those two things, it seemed like it would solve just about everything.
Simple fix.
Yeah. And then the, the food truck issue is, yeah, still needed a special permit, which is fine, and we would go through the same process we went through before, it's just that it would be possible to approve it, because it doesn't incur cost from the city for the entire police department to come and police the whole city over it.
Bottom line, are you pleased with this?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. I, I did want to say, I, just going through this whole process, I have seen a lot of support through the City of Ashland, they've come in and voiced support, I've seen it online, and I just want to say that the whole experience has been great in terms of working with Mr. Wheeler, Chief Kelly on, on all aspects of this, and, and Eden, so I would just like to say that I think things were resolved really well, and, and I just appreciate the, the working together that I've experienced on everything.
We thank you for bringing your business to Ashland.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And Mayor, if I could also clarify one other point, during this process, also heard some comments and may have received something, or seen something somewhere about food trucks not being permitted in the city. This just deals with the special event permit, because it's inside a public right-of-way, and we were having to shut down part of a road and parking space. There is a complete, separate, standalone ordinance that, that has been in place for several years that deals with food trucks. They are absolutely permitted under certain conditions and circumstances, especially on private property. This has nothing to do with the general practice or use of food trucks, it's only about It's only about this, really, this type of specific use and when the EDC activates for the special event use is moving forward.
I'm glad you explained that.
It has, it has nothing to do with the standalone food truck ordinance. That has not changed. This doesn't disturb that at all. That's absolutely still very, very-
We had phone calls on by you guys, did, that, you know, food trucks weren't allowed in Ashland. It's like, what? I didn't know that.
They still have to have business license and all those type of things. But other than that, it's unaffected.
I think this specifically, this issue is that it's on public right of way, therefore requires a special event permit. I think pretty much any food truck requires a special event permit. I don't know about private property, actually, I can't speak to that. But certainly on, on public. So I think that's kind of the main issue here and now has been resolved. So it should actually be a lot easier. My understanding.
Great.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Item Q.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section 2 of Ordinance Number 80, Series of 2022, amending the language of the Entertainment Destination Center in the downtown of the City of Ashland.
Someone, second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? I think before we do the appointment, I think, Mr. Wheeler, you have one addition.
Yes, mayor, there was one addition. And this was a, an add-on, and I can explain in a moment. But An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a project services agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Assurco Risk Management and Regulatory Compliance LLC, DBA Municipal H2O, to complete a risk and resilience assessment and develop an emergency response plan for the city's water system in the amount of $18,500 for the Department of Utilities.
Someone, second.
Discussion?
If, Mark, I hope I get this right, so you might want to come up just in case I need help. But this is something that the EPA requires the city to have, I believe on a yearly or periodic basis. We've previously done one of these, and what year was that, Ms. Menace?
2020.
In 2020. So I guess it's a five-year deal, Mark?
Yeah, this is an update, required update.
Mark had previously been advised by the contractor that based upon the number of customers that we serve, it was likely going to be due in the middle of next year. And he found out yesterday on a team's call, it was actually going to be due at the end of December. So he immediately turned around and called legal to see what we can, you know, what meetings might be available to try to get this squared away. And so that's what leads us here. This is something that we're going to have to do within the fiscal year anyway. It's just the timeline has moved up based upon EPA compliance. How'd it do?
That's it.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
First and second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right. Now we'll move to appointing item R.
The mayor requests the board's concurrence on the appointment of Jamie Martin to the Boyd County Emergency Ambulance Service Board of Directors. Mr. Martin would fulfill the unexpired term of his father, Dicky Martin. Said term expires on January 3rd, 2027.
This is actually a third generational appointment. His grandfather was one of the original board members.
Oh, wow. Stay in the family.
Yep. Someone, second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right, executive session.
I wanted to mention two things before we go in there.
Oh, okay.
We've been meeting on this homeless committee, and I think we've had some really good discussion. It's been really good. We've had several entities within the city that are, that are interested in this, plus the public is invited always. But yesterday, we, we went to that KLC virtual meeting, and they talked about, you know, our vacant lots and the demolition of, it's happening all over the state. But then the question came up about modular homes and tiny homes and certified manufactured homes. Catlinsburg has adopted something, you know, Mr. Martin and Mr. Grub, something to that effect, where they can be zoned correctly and allowed in the city. I'd like to, I've got copies of their ordinance here, if anybody wants to look at it. But they have allowed that, and I'd like us to look into that further about tiny homes and modular homes and some of those lots. And I know there'd be certain zoning prohibition and so forth like that, but I'd like us to look into that.
Well, I think with our, and might want to bring that to the homeless committee, I think, I'm hoping that within time that we come up with a, a plan that what the homeless committee would make a recommendation to the, to this board, you know, to what direction we want to try to, try to go in. Obviously, one of the, like you said, one of the items that's come up is, is for, in homeless, is housing, affordable housing. So obviously, that might be a part of what we come up with.
And specifically-
I think the states made it illegal to, to zone out modular homes. I mean-
That's true.
We're going to have to adjust our ordinances to address that.
That's true. I think they're working out some details now. Mr. Pullman may know some of the details of it. But the question is, I guess, of how are we going to, you know, do our inspections? You know, is that going to be done on the state levels or, you know, or at the manufacturers itself? You know, if it comes here and it's ready to set in there, we can't do plumbing, we can't do electricity, we can't do any of that. But do you know any more of the details on that, Mr. Pullman?
I know a little. We are planning on putting together a presentation for the commission on this topic. But the state approved modular homes, but it's, there's a little caveat to it, is the homes have to be inspected at the plant by HUD federal inspectors, which has really driven up the cost of those modular homes. So you couldn't just pick up any modular home and put it in. It has to be approved by these HUD inspectors. But tiny homes are allowed in Ashland now. They just have to meet modern building code standards. And, but we'll, we'll put together a full presentation on some of the changes and present to this commission soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The second thing I want to bring up, I would hope that we would allow our employees Christmas Eve. I'd like to see us allow our employees to have Christmas Eve off.
Could we go half a day or something?
Have we done-
What is, what is Christmas Eve? What day is Christmas Eve?
I don't even know.
Wednesday, according to Ms. Susan. I trust her.
I mean, nothing gets done.
Yeah. Well.
Unless you're, unless you're on an emergency or something like that. And we've compensated for that in past years.
Mr. Gunnerson used to do that every year, didn't he? He did it frequently.
Do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion. We allow our employees Christmas Eve.
We want to hear from the city manager.
You know, how much is it going to cost? I mean, you know, whoa.
What'd we do last year?
I can give you some historical costs, and maybe Ms. Feach can help me with finance, but it's typically about 80 grand.
Do you know how often it's been done in the past?
Quite a few, yeah, that's probably the first statement, 75% of the time.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Pretty often.
Yes.
So folks will be getting paid whether they're working, or they'd get, basically get an extra day off. Simple as that. So there'd be a cost either way. They'd either be here or they wouldn't. So if-
And obviously, there are some areas that folks can have to work, whether you give the day off or not.
Yeah, right.
Where if, if we make it that the employees get the day off, those who work would then be paid holiday pay? Is that what would happen?
I think that's right. Timmy?
A, no, a non-salaried employee would be-
I can't hear you back there, I'm sorry.
Yeah. A non-salaried employee would get double time, is that right?
A non-salaried employee would be paid holiday pay. A salaried employee, their salary would not change. The big cost becomes police and fire. Because fire department, each member would get 24 hours of a holiday pay.
And that's primarily where the ADK-
That's primarily where the cost is incurred.
But if you did a half a day, so that would, like, police and fire would get half a day or half of their day holiday pay?
Um, we, you would have to negotiate that with the fire department because there was an issue before when we tried that.
If it's a summer we're looking at, I would recommend a full day rather than a half day. Yes.
Marty, you make the motion, and I'll, I'll second it.
Somebody's going to say all in favor.
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion. DJ seconded it.
Oh, you seconded it. All right. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right.
Praise the Lord.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session to discuss personnel matters.
And potential litigation.
Okay. Let's do it.
Thanks for being here, guys. Thanks for being here, guys.